Okay, is Commissioner Edwards here?
Yes, he is with me in the room.
Yeah. Okay, do you want me to just start, Ramiro?
Commissioner Hutchings will start.
Oh, sorry.
All right, and we're live now?
Yeah.
Okay, welcome to the Board of County Commissioners Board Work Session for August 20th, 2020. This topic is the BOCC decision to Hearings Examiner's Appeal Update on Mankey, the case. And if you want to join in and listen on the conference call, the number is 360-252-9020, and the PIN number is 1234. I'm John Hutchings, the Chair of the Board, also President and Vice Chair Commissioner Ty Mensah. In the boardroom is Commissioner Gary Edwards, along with the County Manager, Romero Chavez, and Megan Porter, our PIO. And we also have Assistant County Manager Robin Campbell with us, and CPED Director, that's Community Planning and Economic Development, Josh Cummings is here. Have I missed anybody, Ramiro?
Yes, we have Brett Burris, as well as Jeremy Davis, and Elizabeth Petrich. Do you introduce Elizabeth?
Oh, Elizabeth Petrich, thank you. Deputy Foster, you're dirty, and welcome, Brett, as well.
Yeah.
And please go ahead and start this, Ramiro.
Yeah, this is, you, you, you heard an appeal related to the Mankey appeal as we know it, and as a result, the majority of the Board issue a decision on this particular appeal. Elizabeth is going to walk you through, there is a, there is a couple technical aspects that perhaps your decision perhaps needs to be revised. And that was based on the conversation, they, based on the attorney who was representing Mr. Mankey, they has raised those issues to Elizabeth. So Elizabeth is going to give you the specific details and your agenda. There is the document attached, there are some red lines, and she's going to walk you through what those really mean. Go ahead, Elizabeth.
Thank you, and good morning, Commissioners. As you recall, this decision involved a piece of property that Mr. Mankey owned, and he had requested essentially two different permit approvals. One was an approval of a reasonable use exemption to build in certain critical areas. And he also requested a shoreline conditional use permit. And the Hearings Examiner, who was the initial person to review this matter, denied the reasonable use exemption for various reasons, and then also denied the shoreline conditional use permit for a retaining wall. And the only reason she denied the conditional use permit was because of the fact that she denied the reasonable use exemption, and because that was denied, there were unpermitted structures on site. And under the code, the shoreline conditional use permit could not be issued. But for the other permitted structures, the Hearings Examiner would have approved the shoreline conditional use permit because it met the applicable code criteria. So that decision was appealed up to you, the Board of County Commissioners. The Board of County Commissioners disagreed with the Hearings Examiner on both counts. The focus of the Hearings Examiner's decision captured the dialogue about the reasonable use exemption. And the majority said, no, we think for various reasons that it is appropriate to allow the reasonable use exemption and to allow the unpermitted buildings to be removed. And so you reversed the Hearings Examiner's decision specifically on the reasonable use exemption. After the decision was issued, the attorney for Mr. Mankey contacted me and felt like he was in a little bit of a procedural dilemma about the shoreline conditional use permit. Because it was not specifically called out in your decision, even though that was your intent to approve the shoreline conditional use permit, it made it difficult procedurally for the applicant to proceed because staff was left with your decision, which didn't reverse the Hearings Examiner's decision on the shoreline conditional use permit outright. And the Hearings Examiner's decision, which said that you can't, that the applicant would basically have to reapply. So because the intent of your original decision was to allow Mr. Mankey to maintain the retaining wall, which required a shoreline conditional use permit, it made sense to bring it back to you to amend your original decision to make it very clear that your intention was to reverse the Hearings Examiner's decision, both on the reasonable use exemption and the denial of the shoreline conditional use permit. So if you have the document in front of you, you have the amended decision. So the amendment is rather straightforward. And if you go to page two, it's the, the second paragraph on page two.
Do we have numbered pages here?
Yeah, it's on the, on the top left.
On the top left, okay, that's what I was looking for.
Yeah, turn to the first page, you'll find two.
Got it, got it.
What I've done with the decision, if the Board believes I've interpreted your decision correctly, is I've just implemented, to make it clear, that the Board is disagreeing with the Hearings Examiner's conclusions on decision on both the shoreline conditional use permit and the reasonable use exemption. So that, my first exemption, or my first edit is on paragraph two, on page two, to highlight that the shoreline conditional use permit is also being reversed. Then on page four, I added a third conclusion to your decision, which says, "In light of the approval of the RUE and removal of structures and fixtures identified in finding number four, there will be no unpermitted buildings on site. Therefore, the conditional use permit can be approved." And then in the following paragraph, where it says, "It is hereby ordered as follows. Upon review of the Hearings Examiner's findings cited above and the Board of County Commissioners conclusions discussed above, the Hearings Examiner's decision is reversed, and the revised RUE application and shoreline conditional use permit are approved, subject to the following conditions." This morning, when I was preparing for this meeting, I realized we need to make one more edit. And that is in paragraph A, number three. I want to delete, and three, a shoreline conditional use permit for the retaining wall. So we're not, the intent is not to require the applicant to obtain a permit because you are with this amended decision approving that permit. So that was another amendment that I caught this morning that needed to be made.
So Elizabeth, in section A, then, that A ends with residence, and scratch the rest?
It, it ends with residence, yes.
All right.
Okay, are we open for just a couple of questions here, then?
No, not yet. You better let Elizabeth finish.
Okay.
And the last amendment is adding a condition with, that goes with the shoreline conditional permit. And this was a condition that would have been part, that the applicant agreed to. Well, it was a condition from the Examiner's original decision. So the idea was, you know, if the Hearings Examiner would have approved the shoreline conditional use permit, she would have added this condition. So it makes, makes sense that you continue that condition into this decision. So that's the last amendment, paragraph S.
Okay.
That's being proposed.
All right, go ahead, Gary.
Going back to page four, let's see, before we get started here, the, has Mr. Mankey or his attorney been advised of this meeting we're have today, having today to revise this, to amend it?
No, but I did, I didn't realize it was going to be a public meeting. I did send the proposal to him on what was going to be proposed to you, and he was very grateful and appreciative of the proposed changes.
Okay. Now going under conclusions to number three.
Okay.
I have a question there. It says, right after, in finding number four, so that'd be the second line, red line down, under three, in, under conclusions. It says, "There will be no unpermitted buildings on site." I just question whether that is a correct statement in light of the fact that a citizen can have a 400-square-foot unpermitted building on their property. So I don't want him restricted from that. So how does that fit? Or does that even need to be there? Does that sentence need to be, "There will be no unpermitted buildings on site"? I don't know how to get around that wording to plead him fairly.
I'm, I understand what you're saying, Commissioner, and I can understand why that would be of concern to you. I was, and I can play with that, but I, I am referencing finding number four. So, "In light of the approval of the RUE and removal of structures and fixtures identified in finding number four."
Then I guess, we, we need to know what finding number four says, is that what you're saying?
Right.
It says 4A. So that's the shoreline, but you're referencing the unpermitted buildings that exist on the property today.
Right.
The findings are in the document.
Are?
The findings are in the document.
Right, so where would I find that portion?
On page two is where the title of findings begin.
Okay, let's see, which, which line?
So, finding number four is talking about the proposed mitigation plan. And the mitigation, mitigation plan is removing all those build, unpermitted buildings that prevented the approval of the shoreline conditional use permit. So I could put it that way. I could say, "In light of the approval and removal of the structures identified in finding number four, which permitted," I, I could play with that.
I, I mean, it's just something I don't want him being restricted from doing what other citizens are going to be able to do, is all.
Right, because you're saying a small building, like a shed, doesn't need to be permitted. I understand that, that concern.
So, and then I do have a, another issue. And that is, okay, council was okay with this, right? Everything you're doing? They thought everything was good. But they probably didn't even know about that building issue. Anyway, going back then to page five, I'm questioning whether or not we even need to have an F under, where it says, "Approval of a shoreline conditional use permit is conditioned upon the issuance of a building permit approval for the retaining wall that fully addresses the shoreline stabilization requirements." Because the Hearings Examiner actually said this wall was a good thing somewhere in there, but she didn't feel she could rule on it. So I guess I'm questioning, is, is this, we're already saying that everything is, that, that's okay, I thought, that, back there on page four. Aren't you saying that where you added, "And shoreline conditional use permit are"? So I'm just wondering about that. If that doesn't throw something in there that allows, for an example, somebody that, some of our staff that might not like this ruling or something, they could say, well, we're not going to give you a permit for that. So why does that even need to be in there? Because that ends up holding them up. They might have to jump through a lot of hoops if we include F. I just, I, I'm just wondering why F needs to be in there. It puts it back on the bureaucrats to slow this gentleman down.
Let her, let her answer now.
So, the, so there's two steps under, in a typically, in a typical case with a shoreline conditional permit. So they have to get the permission to actually do the building of a wall. And then the next step, if you get this permit, then you still have to comply with the building permit requirements of the county code. So that's what condition F is speaking to. And the applicant fully understands the, the requirements of complying with the building permit requirements, and is not opposed to that. As I mentioned, this language was shared with the applicant. So I don't know that you just want to approve this without a requirement of a building permit.
For the wall, right? That's what you're saying, is for the, for that wall?
For the wall.
I mean, I just, I can almost see the county requiring this person to go to the Corps of Engineers because it's within, you know, saltwater or whatever, and he's tied up for another couple of years in a bureaucratic nightmare that's unnecessarily imposed upon him if we don't have to do that. And then, and I'm referring back to page four, where it says, "And shoreline conditional use permit are approved." I, I thought that covered it. And maybe I'm making a mountain out of a molehill, but I want to make it easier for Mr. Mankey to finally accomplish his goal in utilization of his property while protecting the environment.
This proposed amendment make it easier. That's the overall purpose of this conversation.
Except if we decide not to give him a permit.
Well, if, if you decide not to amend this, it will make it difficult for him. And, and the language that is proposed, which Mr. Mankey's attorney has agreed, provides the flexibility to Mr. Mankey. So with all due respect, I, I, I don't see the, the, your comment to be detrimental to what the easing Mr. Mankey to continue on with the process.
Okay, so in your estimation, as the county manager that oversees that building department, I guess I'm receiving some assurance that that is not going to be a hindrance for him to move forward. That's, that's what I am concerned about, that here we are throwing another bureaucratic regulatory process in place that should someone decide that they don't like the idea, we overruled this, they're going to make it difficult for him to get a permit. And, you know, I, I don't trust that staff does everything the way we'd like to have it done. That's all. I just want to make sure, and I guess that's, this meeting will be part of the public record, I guess, that we could refer back to. And so if I'm receiving assurances from the county manager that that's not probably going to happen, or not going to happen, then I'm fine with it.
As I, as I read this, this opens the door for Mr. Mankey to make it easier for him to receive what he needs. And again, and I'd be set upon his, his representation, the likeness and approving of this wording as well.
Okay, well.
Ty, that's how I read it, though. I understand your concern. Ty, do you have anything to say? No? Okay. Elizabeth, do you have anything to address that concern?
Mr. Edwards concerned about the department holding up?
No, that the, his concern that F might be detrimental to Mr. Mankey, and not to his favor or benefit.
Well, one way we could make it just more streamlined is to say, is to modify paragraph S. Is to say, "Approval of the shoreline conditional use permit is conditioned upon the issuance of a building permit." Period.
Yeah. I think that makes it clearer.
Okay.
I guess at this point, I guess I would ask that you run it by council, just because we are doing an amended ruling on this.
Are you talking about counsel for Mr. Mankey?
Yes.
Okay, yes, I'm happy to do that.
Okay, I'm good with it, then, thank you.
And then, Mr. Edwards, I am going to modify paragraph three in a way that addresses your concern about the language of no unpermitted building.
Sure. I just want Mr. Mankey to be treated as fair as other citizens in the county are, so.
Okay, thank you, Elizabeth, and then this will come back to us again.
Yes, but I propose, I feel like if you're generally in agreement with what we've discussed today, I don't think we need another meeting. I will present the written document to you, just like I did the written decision.
Okay.
And review it, and sign off on it.
And I, and I'm sorry if you were caught off guard that this is a public meeting, or public event.
Yeah.
So, thank you, really forward to seeing that document, then.
Okay, I should have, by the end of today.
Okay. Ramiro?
Nothing too odd, Commissioner, thank you.
Okay. Thank you for, for joining us, and this concludes this brief. We'll see you at the next one. Bye.
Bye.
Um, hoping to expand and build at the time was going to be like a seven hundred bed. Correctional facility out there. So you know, that gave us some promise. Or hope at least that in the future, we'd be able to take advantage of that. And so we went into planning and, and you know, thought we were on course for that to happen. Then of course, with the core code um ruling, it kind of drove that to a grinding halt. And, and so just moving forward, we'd hope and we will uh make another run at this because um I think it's important. And, and there really are such great benefits for a community when um they receive a correctional facility there. I'm a, my hometown is Walla Walla, Washington, and the penitentiary has been there for a hundred and twenty-five years. And um offers millions of dollars to that community annually and in the wages that come into that area. In, in the case of Maple Lane, if we'd gotten to the seven hundred bed facility, it would have been two hundred and seventy-eight F D Es. Which to translate that, that's two hundred and seventy-eight family wage jobs for people in that area. As um proposed with the reduced size hundred and twenty-eight bed facility, that would have been ninety-one full-time employees. Again, family wage jobs in a community. Actually, I've been spending a little more time myself down in that area because my favorite um gardening place, La- Lails, is down there. It's actually, that's turned into quite a nice little community. But nonetheless, I mean, that's really what we're trying to achieve. Um, you know, we do operate very safe facilities. You know, and absent the opportunity to um truly build out the hundred and twenty-eight bed, um, minimum security as we proposed. And we're probably going to pursue a more short-term use of the space, which is more jail-like, that to our understanding meets the current code requirement. Um, because the agency outside of just having our thirteen correctional facilities around the state, their total confinement facilities. We also manage um nearly twenty thousand um individuals who are on community supervision out in our communities. And on occasion, they commit violations that require them to be housed for up to thirty days. And so that is a purpose that I think meets the current um code requirement for that. Nod your head, Nanette, if I'm correct on that. Okay, um, so that's something that we're looking at. I just wanted to be upfront with you folks about that. You know, and a long experience, I'm almost at thirty-three years in this Department of Corrections. And now there's another spin-off benefit of minimum security work camps in the communities and the fact that they're able to do an awful lot of community service work. We work um on schools, we've in some locations provided, you know, free firewood to um elderly folks in the community. And there's a lot of unrecognized benefits that come to a community from, from having a facility like this outside of just the um family wage jobs. Um, it truly is the opportunity for incarcerated individuals to give back to communities. Um, and we do make that a priority. So really, I just wanted to, one, appeal to you folks um, you know, for further consideration that if we could expand this in the future and get to um a slightly larger, larger operation and certainly just open the hundred and twenty-eight beds would be beneficial. Um, and down the road, um, there's even greater opportunity for more family wage um jobs for the community there if, if we were able to expand. And um, and we're pretty committed to any community where we have a presence. So um, know that we would look forward to being excellent partners with the community for everyone's benefit. And with that, I will leave it to Nanette or Melina if there's something that I should have talked about that I didn't. And then we'll open it up for any questions the commissioners may have.
So who's gonna go first, Nanette?
Uh, no, I don't have anything to add. I think um we're covered uh the points that we'd like to make.
Okay, Melina, do you have anything to add, ma'am?
We just add that um, um, we have clear direction from our legislative partners that this is a project that they're interested in. They've invested in it and see it as a way um to support the state's correctional needs, whether that's in the future or um, short-term or long-term. And so um, we're really hoping that this can be a local and state government partnership um that kind of meets the broader needs of the community.
Uh, thank you. Yeah, is uh, Mr. Secretary, is the uh, the facility still being used by the state for isolation and quarantine?
I, Nanette, can you shake your head on that? I know we had early on, yeah, so it looks like they still have some trailers down there using that. I don't know how many are occupied, to be honest with you, because that's, that operation is being run by the Department of Health.
Okay.
Um, I, I also wanted to um add one other thing, and it just slipped my mind, let me think about it. Um.
While you're thinking, did you, did you all watch, uh, did you see the uh, uh, the commission meeting when we discussed this code amendment?
No, I'm just trying to die.
The discussion, okay. Okay. Um, go ahead.
One thing that, you know, I'd offer up because um, you know, it used to be, I don't know if they still do it or not, I still do graphic up. Used to put out some pretty horrific um documentaries about life in prison. And I would love to take the commissioners and maybe we can go down to Stafford Creek for another facility and let you see what's truly like in, in our um, our correctional system, which is strictly different to what you see on TV. I think oftentimes people just don't have a, a clear understanding of what, you know, what we really do. You know, our, our mission's about improving public safety, but we want to do that by positively impacting lives. And, and we take a very human-centric approach to our work. And it's about making people better. So they go out, commit less crime, and therefore making our community safer. And so I would, at any time, be willing to take any or all of you to go visit one of our facilities, even um, we could even pop out the Cedar Creek Correction Center, which is a, a light work camp. And you can get a little exposure to what that's really like.
Well, as you stated, Mr. Secretary, there's a lot of benefits that DOC uh provides, and it's a needed necessity, and it's valuable in the community. Um, and uh, in the right place. And uh, I'm gonna open it up to my commissioner to see if they have anything they'd like to say. Commissioner Edwards?
Uh, yes, I, I find it's kind of interesting here. We've got a uh, a state organization that's being held up by the bureaucratic process that the state put in place that we have to live by when it comes to uh putting things on the docket and such. So, I mean, that being said, I, I'm sure there's ways around that, if you will. But uh, I'd also like to point out as a continuation of those restrictions that prohibit uh, otherwise common sense issues maybe from moving forward. I'd say probably those two hundred and fifty employees that you might be talking about down there at Maple Lane, they're gonna all go move into Lewis County somewhere, because we've got so many restrictions in place on building for our own folks that want to build a home and, and experience the American dream. Uh, that we'd need to change that as well as change the whole uh process that you're gonna have to go through. And kind of unfortunately, it seems like the twenty sixteen Board of County Commissioners probably gave a commitment without any public input. So uh, because we faced quite a backlash on just the rumor, if you will, that this might go on. So as a selling point, I, I would recommend possibly that you folks should maybe participate with the local Chamber of Commerce down there once in a while, get on their agenda. And also uh get that information out about what an asset uh you could be to that particular community, because I do believe you could be an asset, but that uh, we need a little salesmanship going on ahead of even getting this on the docket process. So that immediately you don't run into so much resistance. And most resistance comes about because of a lack of knowledge, I would guess. And I, I think you could start by intermingling with that local community. I'd just suggest the Chamber of Commerce would be a good spot to start and maybe expand out from there. So look forward to working with you on this somewhere down the road, but like the county manager pointed out, you know, you're up against this bureaucratic nightmare that holds up almost all citizens when they're trying to do good things. So I, I'll just uh quit there.
Commissioner Menzger?
Thank you for that, Commissioner Edwards. And I just wanted to, um, but we have done some of that groundwork, but I appreciate, because we have interacted with the Rochester School District, and I think even the Chamber of Commerce. But you're certainly right, and we're happy to get out there and um communicate with those folks, see if we can garner some, some more support there. And I will admit to being a bureaucrat, but I won't admit to owning all bureaucratic functions that hold great effort. So um, yeah, I, I'm only responsible for a sliver, sliver of bureaucratic stuff in the Department of Corrections.
You should see, you should go. Thank you.
You should see what we have to live with.
I, I can only imagine, sir.
Commissioner Menzger, do you have any comments or questions, sir?
Sure. Um, so there's a couple of aspects of this for me. Um, one is, you know, I'm a former public defender. Um, I ran for office on a platform of criminal justice reform and trying to help reverse ma- mass incarceration trends that we've seen in our nation over the last thirty years. I like to promote alternatives to incarceration. Um, as long as our jails are full of mentally ill and substance addicted folks, I think we need a completely different approach to those problems. So the heavy lift right out of the gate to say, let's put a seven, let's build seven hundred new beds. I would need to know a lot more about your overall capacity. Now, if it's, if it's that you're gonna do that because you have to shutter, you know, four or five other facilities and et cetera, then maybe that's information that I could use to talk to my constituents about, you know, how this fits into the overall system. But my constituents were seeing this as just, as just doubling down on a bad approach to problems that need a different um, you know, a, a different pathway. So that was a big problem for me. And then the second was the location and the community. I took office in January twenty eight, twenty nineteen. This did come before us that March, and I was overwhelmed drinking from the fire hose, trying to learn how to be a commissioner. And I actually, I'll be honest, I, I had confused this location with Cedar Creek. So I didn't, I had, I did not realize that Maple Lane was, you know, within, you know, throwing a rock of the school district and all those different aspects. And the community didn't speak uh to the commissioners about it. And the project, I thought the project was, you know, had already been approved by a previous board, and I wasn't looking to, you know, disrupt projects that were in midstream. So I didn't really take a look at it. And then this year, for some reason, it, the community caught wind of it. And then I started to get a lot of input from the community, and I realized there was the aspect of, you know, the proximity to schools and the fact that it was potentially going to go to seven hundred. I thought it was just a convert, I thought it was originally just a conversion of function. I didn't realize it was such a potential expansion. Um, and I do not look at prisons as, you can, you know, to me, as you can tell from my comments, I, I see building prison spaces having a lot of um societal and policy implications. I do not look to prisons for my economic development um, projects. So that argument doesn't really go very far with me. I need to see that it's something that the community can live with. Maybe Commissioner Edwards is right that we can, that can be sold and, sold and, you know, I don't mean that pejoratively, but explained in a way. Because I, you know, as a former defense attorney, I, you know, I've been, I've been all around prisons. I worked for the state of Alaska for a number of years, and I was, been in prison. So I, I don't have any real concern about safety and those types of things necessarily. But I do have a problem with, you know, understanding how this fits into the state's vision. You know, I, I had no information about how this fits into the state's vision, you know, I don't know if, I don't know if the, you know, are you shutting other facilities down? Is the, I, it's not, I'm not aware of crime exploding across Washington State. Is the prison population for some reason exploding? You know, is this uh, looking down the road, kind of a fifty-year plan, like they're looking at C-TAC and air travel and population? I mean, I don't know where this fits and how necessary it is to your overall system. So that's kind of my question, I guess, to go back to you guys.
Okay, so um, to get to your initial comments, I'll do something totally inappropriate and give you an air hug. Um, because I, I agree with the, the fact that we probably do over-incarcerate people's mental health. I think we've over-criminalized um substance abuse. Um, and that, yeah, certainly there ought to be some front-end approaches. A big fan of drug courts and sentencing alternatives for, you know, health cases. We're certainly not in the business of increasing our population. And it's not our goal. Our goal is really to impact recidivism and reduce um future populations. Unfortunately, just the um, the math of things tells us that over time, it will increase. Um, and so really, that's what we're preparing for. I can tell you that right now, today, we don't need seven hundred beds. We're not even planning for the seven hundred beds. You know, we're, we're looking at a hundred and twenty-eight beds for transition uh facility. And, you know, I call them work camps, and I, I, that's not the right thing. We're, we're really trying to make these more um re-entry centers where people can get acclimated um to re-entering communities and be better prepared for release. And that's really what we're trying to accomplish in these smaller um minimum security facilities. Oftentimes, they're able to engage with D and R, and, you know, they help out on fire crews and then do a lot of um um ecological work, you know, stream bed restoration, any number of things that these crews will do. Um, so really, this is looking down the road. And today, the way that the population has shifted, um, literally before COVID, um, our incarcerated population was um hovering around seventeen thousand. And today, it's down to about um fourteen thousand and some change. And so, and that is a result of a couple of things. Uh, recognize that we did reduce the population. The governor um took a, a step to reduce some low-risk individuals and get them back out in communities a little earlier. And, and then probably the biggest impact has been the slowdown from the courts and people getting convictions and being sentenced to prison. I would assume that at some point, that will pick up, and there will likely be a backlog that will hit us like a wave. Um, and quickly increase our need to have additional space. And so that's why it's so important for us to have things looking off into the future, as you pointed out, Commissioner, that we can depend upon as our next steps um to expand that capacity. And so seven hundred is not our goal today. Hundred and twenty-eight is, but to be completely honest with you, I don't think I need the hundred and twenty-eight beds tomorrow, just because of the, the change in population. We could certainly use it for the short-term housing I mentioned earlier for community violators up to thirty days. So I'd say that's probably our most critical need right now. But I want to be open and transparent, saying that over time, it could expand into a larger facility. And, yeah, we're just hoping to do the groundwork for that. I, I hope that answered your question, Commissioner, and if you need clarity, I'm happy to provide it.
Uh, we're running out of time, so I will just uh kind of wrap it up by saying uh, Commissioner Menzger, being a, a former public defender. Uh, I have a thirty-five-year career in law enforcement in that profession, and I kept his profession very busy. I put a lot of bad guys in jail and prison. And uh, uh, but having said that, I've been dealing with good guys, bad guys, my entire career. So when I went to the open house in Grand Mount regarding this issue, I was the bad guy. And it didn't feel comfortable. And it was, as it's already been stated, it was within spitting distance of a primary, a secondary, and a high school. And these people were, their hair was on fire about a prison with bad guys being put in their backyard, the backyard of schools. And they were recounting stories of a couple, or you said maybe several years ago, where there was an escapee at one point in time from uh Maple Lane and burglarized the school district and the school building. So that, that was very fresh in their mind, like it happened yesterday. Um, so when you make another run at this, and yeah, I don't mean that in a negative way, but you make another run at this uh in the future, I would, I would suspect there'd be a lot more preparatory work with the commission, with CPED, with the community, as uh Commissioner Menzger, uh Edwards stated. Um, and um, maybe you'll have a better, a better shot at it in the future, but the community has to come along, because without the community, you won't get the commissioners, for sure.
Yes, sir, I can totally appreciate that. And it's, you know, it's kind of interesting that, you know, we've had a facility out at um Monroe for probably, I'm close to a hundred years.
Yeah.
And they built a school that abuts the property. And, and really, it hasn't been an issue. I can't say that, that there never would be an issue. Um, but certainly, that would be a highest priority for us. And I, and so I take your comments very seriously, and we'll continue to work with that important group of stakeholders to see if we can ease their concerns.
Uh, Secretary Sinclair, I'm, I'm really glad that you uh reached out to us. And uh, I hope we were uh, and if this was of value to you, because it was to us, I believe it was for us. Uh, and also to um Ms. Graham and Ms. Thompson, thank you very much for joining us as well. Uh, did you, I don't know, CPED, I want to disrespect you, Josh. Did you have anything to add to the conversation?
You know, I might briefly just say that I really appreciated the opportunity to collaborate with Assistant Secretary Jeanne Miller on this topic. Uh, one of the reasons I think it came back so quickly and in force was we committed to the Department of Corrections to move on this process as directed by the Board of County Commissioners. Uh, in CPED, we can't guarantee outcomes, but we can guarantee process. And so that's why this has moved so quickly. Uh, not to the resolution that Department of Corrections obviously wants, but it was our commitment to go as quickly as possible, and we did. And we appreciate that collaboration.
No, we appreciate your collaborations well, Commissioner. Very much appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
Hey, Hutch, Hutch?
Yeah.
Uh, just one quick thing, possibly, we're almost up against that clock. Uh, we're talking about collaboration. Uh, just for the secretary, possibly, the county jail, Thurston County Jail, has its own set of problems that the uh county commission has been struggling with for some time as to how to address. So I might just suggest that as you think about this, you might think about some type of a partnership with Thurston County uh that might ease this whole transition. I, I'm not saying it's doable, I'm just saying, think about that, maybe.
All right, thank you. Mr. Romero, we're wrapping up.
Uh, yeah, thank you very much. I really appreciate um uh, Secretary Sinclair to join us this morning, his, his staff. Um, certainly, we're gonna see this item coming up in, in, in the future. And um, and I really appreciate the, the open and candid conversation this morning. So thank you so much.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you all very much. Bye-bye now.
Thank you. Have a great day. Stay safe, stay healthy.
Thank you. We're pushing into another meeting now. Bye-bye.
Uh, and she's gonna give us the green light in three, two, one.
All right. Good morning, and welcome to the Board of County Commissioners Board Work Session for August twenty, twenty twenty. And this is on the Long Lake Management District Public Hearing Follow-up. Uh, if you'd like to join in, listen, be at the conference call, the phone number is three six zero two five two nine zero two zero, and the PIN number is one two three four. I'm John Hutchings, the Chair of the Board. Also present is Commissioner Gary Edwards, County Manager Reno Chavez, Assistant County Manager Robin Campbell. And I see uh Tim Wilson is here in the House, uh, our Water Resource Manager, and Paula Cracknell, Aquatic Resource Specialist.
Hey, Commissioner Menzger, just, Commissioner Menzger just joined us.
We're joined by the Vice Chair, uh Commissioner Ty Menzger. So you want to start off, uh Romero?
Yeah, briefly, Commissioners, this is a follow-up uh to the uh Long Lake uh Management District uh here, a public hearing that you held back in um July twenty-first, two thousand and twenty, where you received public testimony related to the proposed thirty-four-dollar rate increase for the Long Lake Management District um uh residents. So at this point, I will leave it up to Tim to walk us through this proposal. I'm sorry.
I have, I have one question.
Yeah.
This briefing paper says informational, this one says decision needed.
Is, is that decision needed, sorry?
Okay.
Yep, thank you. So I was gonna say, at the end of this briefing, we would like to hear the, the board's direction. Um, uh, obviously, you will not be approving anything today, but you provide direction to bring a formal uh action for you to consider uh at a future Board of County Commissioners meeting.
Right, thank you, thank you. Go ahead, take it. Tim?
Uh, yes, good morning, Commissioners. Tim Wilson, Water Resources Manager, Public Works. Uh, we also have Paula Cracknell, Aquatic Resource Specialist with us. And also a member of the public, Doug Carmen, uh, who is the President of the Long Lake Steering Committee, is in attendance as well. Uh, so just real quickly, uh, the purpose of the briefing today is to follow up on the July twenty-first public hearing regarding the petition thirty-four-dollar rate increase for the Long Lake Management District. This is a um, an increase that was petitioned, uh, obviously by the ratepayers uh of the LMD. Uh, we will also be presenting information that was requested by the board at that public hearing um regarding uh the rate structure for the LMD and specifically the public parcels uh within those boundaries. Uh, Paula is going to provide a short uh PowerPoint presentation today uh regarding the results and and the information requested. And then at the end of the presentation, uh, we have outlined two options for the board to consider and will provide a recommendation uh for moving forward at that point. And if there are no questions, I will hand it over to Paula.
Don't see any questions yet. Don't see, okay, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Tim. I'm gonna share my screen here. Okay. Okay, good morning, everybody. As Tim mentioned, we are here to follow up on the results of the public hearing that was held on July twenty-first for the Long Lake Management District proposing a thirty-four-dollar annual rate increase to fund water quality improvement projects. The proposal from the LMD is a fee increase of thirty-four dollars per parcel. And the purpose of this is to expediently save money for And the purpose of this is to expediently save money for an aluminum sulfate treatment to treat the algae that's in the lake. And this is a flat rate that will apply to all vacant and residential parcels. And this is an additional fee on top of the regular LMD fees that the LMD members already pay. We followed a public process, the LMD. Put information in their Fall twenty nineteen newsletter to inform the ratepayers of the petition for the rate increase. Also, the annual Long Lake Management District meeting that is held every January. Had two postcards sent out at two different times to the ratepayers to inform them of the meeting. Additional public outreach went out in the Spring twenty twenty newsletter. And per RCW, the public hearing was advertised in a local news source for twenty days. And notification of the public hearing was also mailed to all, all ratepayers in the LMD. The results, we had one letter that was received with no other written comments. Two members of the public provided testimony. One was a ratepayer residing within the LMD and was supportive of the rate increase and the other was not a ratepayer of the LMD and they opposed it. Here is a map which should go along with a PDF that you guys have, shows you the boundaries of the Long Lake Management District. I thought that this would be good to provide for a visual, just to visually see how many parcels are part of the LMD. The rate structure for twenty twenty. Is lakefront property, properties are charged three dollars and ninety two cents per foot of private lakefront. And this is linear feet of lakefront. And for habitat reserve or conservati- conservation sites, they're charged seventy two cents per foot. The parcel itself has a charge of forty two dollars and ninety two cents per dwelling unit, per home. And twenty two dollars and ninety six cents per vacant parcel. So a parcel with a house pays forty five dollars and ninety two cents plus whatever their footage of lakefront is. For the public parcels, improved public boat launch property, like the Fish and Wildlife Boat Launch, they pay three dollars and ninety two cents per private lakefront foot as well. With the same forty five dollar and ninety two cents per dwelling unit or twenty two dollars and ninety six cents per vacant parcel. The difference between the public sites and the private sites is the public access sites are charged per day for usage. So it's twenty cents per day for swimming access and a dollar twenty eight per day of boat launch access. And this was determined by the original iteration of the Long Lake Management District. Who physically went to the boat launch and. Counted off how many boats were launching and how many people were swimming and they came up with a calculation. Which for the boat launch. Is sixteen thousand seventy two boater days and the City of Lacey fifty three thousand six hundred and sixty nine swimmer days. And additional boater days have been added to the City of Lacey Park because they started launching kayaks. The City of Lacey owns twelve parcels and the current collective annual fee for all of those is fourteen thousand nine hundred and thirty eight dollars and seventy two cents. This comprises of seven point four nine percent of the total lake fees. Thurston County also owns three parcels within the LMD boundary, however, they are easements or right of ways and so they pay no LMD fees. They are considered open parcels. Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife owns one parcel, the boat launch, and the current annual fee is twenty two thousand dollars, three hundred and sixty and sixteen cents. And this parcel comprises of eleven point two one percent of the total fees. So for the thirty four dollar rate increase, the impact to the ratepayers is this fee will be applied to their annual LMD assessment until the LMD sunsets in twenty twenty six. Senior and disabled ratepayers will continue to receive a ninety five percent reduction, so their fee would be a dollar seventy. And this will continue without raising or lowering until twenty twenty six when the LMD is needing to be reestablished. For today, there are two options for you to consider. Option number one is to adopt the rate increase. The pro of this is it allows the Long Lake Management District to save additional funds to treat algae. The con of this is that ratepayers will incur thirty four dollar annual increase that they will be responsible for paying. Another option is to reject the rate increase. The pro of this would be ratepayers do not incur that thirty four dollar increase. And the con is that it limits the funds available for future alum treatment. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Paula.
You're welcome.
The Commissioner Edwards, do you have any questions?
Yes, at what age do you become a senior for the benefit there?
I do not know the answer to that question. Tim, do you know?
No, I don't have that information either. I would just say that it is tied in with. With the Assessor's Office. Assessors, Assessor's Office's policy regarding senior discounts. So I believe it is sixty two, but I am not certain of that.
How, how about if we ask Doug? I see Doug's on the screen there.
I am on. The, my understanding, it's, it's income based, not just seniors. In other words, you have to show that your income is below a certain level to qualify for the county's. Decreased taxes.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Mensah?
I thought that. Maybe I'm confusing briefings, but I thought, I think this was the hearing where a citizen. Said why, since county lakes are a. Public resource, why don't, why do we, why don't we stop giving stormwater discounts to? The districts and start managing the algae ourselves. The county should take control of that. Stop charging people for it. But also stop discounting their stormwater fees and basically. And there was a question about, well, I don't like the money flow, like I don't know how much money we discount versus how much money we would spend. Making these types of treatments. Of course, that's speculative because you know, what kind of treatment would you do and how often, but. I, I thought that was something that we were gonna sort of. Look at as part of this follow up. Am I misremembering that?
I, I don't recall being, being asked to follow up on that, particularly, you are, you are correct, Commissioner Mensah, in that. There was a comment regarding that at the public hearing. What, what I heard and what we were tracking on for this is a question from Commissioner Edwards regarding. The, the public contribution. Into the rates. I will say that. As far as the stormwater fee goes, the board took action. Last year as part of the Stormwater Code Updates to build in some accountability regarding the fifty percent fee reduction. That is allowable to the LMDs. So that they are, they can demonstrate that they are in alignment with our, our goals regarding water quality.
The fee reduction, do you happen to know off, kind of offhand, what that kind of, like what that dollar amount like looks like, just? Like, just, just the stormwater part of it, obviously, it's. Possible to speculate what the county would spend on doing management ourselves, but in terms of the discounts that are given. Like, I don't, I don't have a sense of what fifty percent of somebody's stormwater fees means.
I believe Doug can help here, but I think the average, for the average ratepayer out there. It equates to roughly to the thirty four dollars that's being requested.
Okay. I guess my only other question is. And I know that this is not Black Lake, but since we just talked about Black Lake. And we were just talking about the algae control. And Paula was just mentioning about. The sediment and the. External versus internal sources. I'm just curious whether Long Lake sits in a different position or is in a similar position. We had that study from Black Lake. I don't know if there's ever been a similar. Study for Long Lake in terms of what's, you know, what, what are the sources of? Of the phosphorus? Is it the same? I assume it's the same culprit? This is a little outside my expertise.
Yeah, it is similar. There was a study done on Long Lake quite some time ago and I can forward that to you as well. But fifty percent of the phosphorus is, is, was found to be in the sediment based on the models that were ran by the engineers. And so that's also a significant amount of phosphorus inputs that are actually loading internally. So there's an internal process of phosphorus loading into the water column, but there's also external sources. So both of the factors need to be fixed in order to fully. Abate the problem. You're never going to completely get rid of any, any phosphorus in the lakes because. Long Lake is on the three or three D list for phosphorus as well as that internal loading that happens, so. It is very similar. Our, our lowland lakes here are all very similar.
And that number, if I remember right, for you said is like sixty five or something for Black Lake?
Yes.
And you're saying it's around fifty for Long Lake to the, to the last data we have?
Yes, the last data, which is old data, so.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Give me a second.
Yeah, no problem.
Oh, Tim, if you don't know this, I'm sure Doug will. How many ratepayers do we currently have in that district?
Doug, can you give that information?
Yeah, total.
Or Paula?
Yeah. I can give that information. So there are currently. One thousand four hundred and twenty one.
One thousand four hundred and twenty one ratepayers. And is the district boundary changing in any way at all?
Well, it will change. It will change next year because there are new apartments that are going in. So we're going to have to do a thorough look at those parcels, but the boundary itself won't change. So the P that you have that shows the physical boundary, the outline, that will stay the same.
Okay, the, the reason I ask is out of the incitable public process. The public outreach in the fall of last year. The, in January this year, the annual meeting, it was brought up, public outreach in the spring. Public hearing advertised for twenty days and notification mailed to all ratepayers. And only two responses came back. And one was from someone who's not in the district, not a ratepayer rather. And he's not, he's opposed to it. So I didn't know if maybe he's not currently a ratepayer, but maybe he's going to be included in the boundary. Change and he'd be, or she would be anti or against it. So only two. Two members of the public provided testimony, one letter received and that was it. Okay. I have no, uh, let me see, I have no other questions. So anything else for me, Gary?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Okay. The map that was provided to us. There's a lot of what looked like back lots that are not lakefront, that are not included in the yellow. And which I guess indicates they're not in the district. And my question is why? Why was that?
Yeah, let me pull that image back up so you guys can all see. Oops, there we go. So. If you. Look at this, oops, sorry. So if you look at this, we have different classifications for the parcels. We have lake. All the blue. Boat launch, open parcels, which are conservation parcels, conservancy and then uplands.
Yep.
Question is why they're yellow? It's because they don't reside on the lake, but they do have lakefront access.
Okay, and all those blank lots that are back are the same as if they lived a mile away, then is that, is that kind of what you're saying?
The blank lots.
Well, there's, there's lots that are not color coded. And I guess. Those are not members of this Lake Management District, I guess.
Only the ones that have colors are included in the boundary of the LMD.
And, and that is because they have lake access and the others don't, I guess, right?
Yeah, and the county engineer at the time that the LMD was in its current iteration in twenty sixteen. The county engineer determines the boundaries with the Lake Management District.
I, I do have a question for Doug, if I could. As this was developed. Why is it that there were so many exemptions? I'm just trying to think of, of spreading the wealth to do a better job on, on the whole water quality issue. I was just curious.
You mean exemptions. Relative to the gray area on the map?
Yes, yes, sir.
Yeah, well, the reason is they do, they are counted in the county. And we, they do not have lake access except through. Counties, state or city lots. They can go to the Lacey Park and go swimming. But they have no other access or they can launch a boat at the boat launch. And use the lake and we collect for that basically on the fees we charge the what, the Department of Fish and Wildlife and the City of Lacey.
Okay, that, that all makes sense. I do have another question. Do any of these lots that are indicated as part of the district? Are any of them trailer parks, like senior trailer parks or anything like that?
I don't, I've never seen one, no.
Okay, I'm good.
Anybody else, Commissioner Mensah?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Then Romero, we're getting ready to wrap it up.
Yes, sir. So at this point, I would like to see what is the, the pleasure of the board based on the two options that you, you have before you. And again, the options before you is to, for you to consider adopting the rate as proposed. Or reject the rate as proposed. So what will be the, and again, it, it will require a formal action. By the board, if you will like to move forward with adoption of the rates and that will be coming at a later date during the board meeting. But at this point, I would like to hear a direction so as to start working on that.
So the, for adopting the rate increase, thumbs up?
Yeah.
Just two, three, three thumbs up, okay.
So thank you, Commissioners. We'll move forward and you will see a national item later in the year.
Okay, Doug, nice to hear from you. Tim, thank you very much. Paula, thank you very much as well.
Thank you.
And we're ending this meeting. We adjourn.
Have a good day, everybody.
Thank you.